We can have skirting somewhere in this building.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. We are now going to begin our August ninth, two thousand sixteen board workshop. I'll call this meeting to order quietly. The purpose of the workshop, we have four items. We have the district legislative platform being held by Mr. Sarah, our legislative lobbyist. We have our board priorities. We have our test district testing calendar, and we have our turnaround school plan for the James Stevens International Academy. At this point, I will begin with deferring to Mr. Sarah.
Thank you. Mrs. Fisher sent out a memo about six weeks ago outlining the schedule and process for our platform development. We had a period available for board members and the staff to offer suggestions for changes. And at that point, we had a committee meeting of the superintendent and Mrs. Fisher and I to go over those suggestions and to prepare a draft purely for discussion purposes so that we had a basis for this workshop. And that draft is before you. It is in underlined and strike-through format based upon your adopted platform from last year. And the stricken items are largely items that are have either already occurred or they were items that have become out of date. And or given particularly our new top priority in dealing with teacher recruitment retention that we felt there was overlap with one item and so we've taken that out. But let me just.
Just a quick excuse me because we thought we were going to be up there and who else think, oh, I'm sorry. We're on the same, I was getting ready to leave. I'm sorry. We're on the same page. Who needs a copy of it?
Yeah, we're on the same page.
Yeah. Who all needs copies of that?
Yeah, because we thought we were going to be up there. I don't know where we're down.
Well, we are because Ms. LaRiviere expressed the desire to be down here in this format when we did that. So the staff probably picked up on it. I wasn't aware either. Do we all want to just move up to our chairs? Should we have access to our computers?
The format's not a.
I have no problem with the format.
The format's not a problem as far as having discussion. And we, when we talked about that, it was discussion to have workshops at Canal so we could have this, easily do this.
Right.
So, so I was not aware that today we're going to do it this. So, and I appreciate staff being on top of that, but I, several of us are not prepared with.
Well, I agree. I was expecting to use the monitor.
So as long as we have, and I think Dr. Atkins has gone to make copies of what we'll need. So.
Very good.
So I'm sorry for interrupting. I just had to go against protocol. I was going to jump up and I thought we don't need all of us jumping up to.
I think Bob expected us to have all of this committed to memory. There will be a test later. I think Jason, but I'm still too old to be able to see that.
She, she didn't say what? I have to confess, I've never done it for my children have, but I've never done it.
Comprehensive plans and resources are needed for recruiting, retaining, and training the highest quality workforce. So that, given the growth that the district is experiencing and the number of new instructional personnel that the district will have to hire in each of the next several years. And the, what is an obvious shortage in the state, but also what seems to be a national trend towards a teacher shortage. If you look at the pipeline of those that are in the university programs, some attention needs to be brought to this quickly, especially in a district like Lee County where we're growing. Because every district has issues with hiring new teachers, given retirements and just the normal transitions that go on. But it will become a crisis for a district like us and our ability to meet the needs in the future and continue to improve our outcomes. We won't be able to do that unless we have the right people. We have brought that forward and we've moved it to the top item. And it reflects my understanding of the superintendent's priorities and challenges. And the second item, the real bullets, I'm sorry, yes?
Are we going to talk about these one by one? Or are we just going to go through them all?
However you would like to do it. It's a workshop. It's your workshop.
I guess my first question on this topic is the title, provide high-quality professional classroom teachers. I don't think we want them to provide teachers. I think we want them to provide funds for investment in hiring and retaining high-quality teachers.
I, I agree that I don't know if they, if we want to say teachers, but I'd also don't know if we want to use the word funding.
Resources.
Ms. LaRiviere.
I wonder if resources could be a possible example because, or because I look at several things that make a difference with hiring them. Part of it is funding is a very important piece, but also when they took away our local control with regard to looking at how we evaluate our teachers based on our needs and their service within our community. So by them taking away, they've taken away local control through their decisions with VAM, through their decisions, regardless of how different people view them, but they gave a blanket statement regarding the professional services contract rather than letting each district work what was best for them. And so I, I think it's on multiple levels that makes a difference for having those high-quality people. It's not just hiring and having the money for, but it's having the support systems in place that make them want to stay. And I'll tell you that VAM and the way it's misused scares many people.
Ms. Morgan, would you try to, with, with just my slant, just the fact that I just don't want to turn them off right at the title, but I agree with your position. Could you give me something that what you were thinking to reach that same objective, but doing it in a way that doesn't get them off the queue?
Provide resources for investment in high-quality classroom instruction. High-quality classroom instruction.
Or provide dedicated resources?
Okay.
What was the last part? Provide dedicated resources towards?
Investment in high-quality classroom instruction or high-quality instruction.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Ms. Fisher?
Well, when we're looking at that, is it only classroom teachers that we're talking about? Or do we want professional, high-quality school staff, including administrators and support services, et cetera?
So is there high-quality instructors, high-quality employee, personnel?
Educational.
Employees.
Employee, educational. You're working on.
I think your title actually took care of it. And then within, within the, within the bullet itself, rather than using professional classroom teachers, we can, we can use professional educators because that would cover.
Everybody. Or do you want to spell it out and say, support effective administrators, teachers, and staff? That you are basically touching on everything that you are looking to hire.
When I look at the body, it's mostly addressing what we can provide to our educators. So I wonder if within the body, if we, if we had a, if we were able to outdo a bullet that maybe was included educators and support personnel. And, and because educators doesn't, will include our administrators. It will include our superintendent. So it will include all of those people. But we also do need to have, we may want to consider adding something within the body regarding our support personnel.
Art support personnel, educational professionals.
Yeah.
Okay. So with the redone title and eliminating the reference to classroom teachers and having a more broad educators. And then I've got a note to also look at support personnel or something more generic as a, as a final bullet now.
I have a, just, and I want to just throw this out to the board. I don't want to have this for support personnel. I know we're always trying to be inclusive and, but that's not this focus.
Exactly.
We're addressing the teacher shortage and they're talking about teacher testing. Our support personnel doesn't have VAM. Our support personnel doesn't have, you know, this is directed at the problem that the state legislature is doing because they're not focusing on our support personnel either.
Yeah.
They're, you know, business operations is a business operation and, and those are, you know, oblivious to our state legislators. They just, they don't, they don't focus in. They don't hone on our maintenance side or our bus, you know, our bussing and our, and our, and our maintenance side. They just don't, you know, and so they don't, so we don't want to really include them because they're really not targeting them. They're targeting teachers and educators, counselors, you know, media specialists. That's educators. And I think we need to really stay focused, laser-like on that, on that topic, Ms. Fisher.
And really, that's what I meant. I did not mean to, maybe I didn't, I wasn't clear, but professional educators. I was referring to all of those people who are in direct contact with students and who may support the classroom teacher, but not be a classroom teacher.
And that's why I had a side conversation. I apologize to Ms. Dozier. And the reason why I want to just keep it educator, I think that we need to, as this board and as our consortium, when Ms. Morgan takes that up with our consortium, we need to keep the word educator out there and work on having everybody educate our state legislators. When we're talking about an educator, we're talking to anybody that touches a child. And they don't get that. They just think, when they think educator, they only think the person that's standing in front of the classroom as the majority of the time, and that's not it. And so I think if we don't change that, that, that topic, then we're continuing to, we're our own worst enemies.
Thank you. I agree. Thank you.
I appreciate the feedback on that. And yes, the superintendent had a comment too, I think.
Well, just, you know, I, I agree wholeheartedly with what you're saying. I mean, I think we need to have a laser focus on that. And then within that, you know, specific details that we want to push on, just some, just some examples that we find that make it very difficult. One is you could just take a look at something like accreditation at our university in terms of our programs. FSW has closed down their math and science programs because of accreditation concerns. That's, that's a, that's a state requirement that's causing them not to be able to produce math and science teachers. That results in a critical shortage for us. Certification requirements is another issue that makes it very difficult for our first-year teachers to survive. It's just that they come into our, we have to, because of the lack of education graduates, we have to go outside and get other areas. Those students have to have a lot of tests and classes that they have to take. Those requirements can be overwhelming and create a large number of dropouts in that first year because they don't have the support that they need because it's the credential that they have to get. Finally, one of the things that we had discussed with Mr. Sarah was the potential of maybe going to legislators and with, around this particular priority and talking about a grow-your-own scholarship program. Since our discussion, we've asked Dr. Pruitt and Christine Christensen, their staff, to, to look at a potential program that we could target our rising juniors and seniors coming out of our teaching academies to go to local colleges and universities on scholarship to come back and be teachers. And then also go into Florida Gulf Coast University and FSW to their juniors and seniors and incentivize them maybe to come on over to education. And we'll provide you scholarships so you can focus on your studies, get done, and come work for us. I did take the opportunity at the Quality of Life candlelight vigil to just mention it briefly to Representative Fitzhagen, who seemed, and I hope you don't mind I did that. I just thought, well, this is an opportune time, so. And she seemed to have some interest in doing that. So all of that around this particular priority for focusing on our teachers so that we can get more of them. Because as you've heard me say too many times, and the data that Dr. Pruitt has supported this, the number that they're producing, you know, maybe eighty, it might be a hundred and fifty between the two, doesn't meet the demand. Sheets already crossed the five-hundred mark this summer in terms of instructional staff with probably a hundred or so still in the hopper. And if you're producing, you know, less, less than two hundred from the two combined, that doesn't meet our need. So.
Good point.
Anybody else?
I have some notes that I think will, we can work up through our committee to present to you a recommendation for, for that. On the, I'm sorry.
Same one.
Okay. Yes.
That last sentence is more about practice than policy. I understand what you're trying to do, but it's invited, to me, it's an invitation for them to tell us how to hire, how to retrain. You know, it's comprehensive plans and resources. We don't need plans. We need resources. And, and to the extent that it's resources, I think it's explanatory and maybe redundant about what comes above. Want to just eliminate comprehensive plans and then let resources be there first? Because you're supposed to start with something and end with something, and that's what you're doing here. Okay.
You okay with that?
Is there anything else on that item?
Anybody else?
Okay. I've got our notes and we'll be ready to go on, on that item. And obviously, that's where we made the most changes. So that's obviously where we're going to have the most discussion. On the, on the second item, the, the positions haven't changed. The two bulleted requests are still what they were before. The discussion of that has changed just slightly where we deleted a reference to this critical source of local funding needing to be restored. And instead pointed out the fact that while this funding was taken from capital and transferred to operations in oh-seven and oh-eight sessions, that since then, through a number of different policies spread out over about three different sessions, that same half-mill has evaporated out of operations and it was not transferred back to capital. There has been no study when it was taken. It was taken because we were in a crisis. And we didn't need a study of what the need was in the capital area because the need in the operations was obvious and immediate. But capital is not a one-year budget. It is not something that sneaks up on us. It is now something that, over a five-year period and a ten-year period, and we are not the only district facing this, but our, our projections on growth make this certainly an extreme situation for you and more important than the districts as a whole. And we wanted to point that out and that the restoration of that half-mill would not be a tax increase. And at the state level, they don't actually raise that tax. They only establish the tax, the cap on that rate. And you have to make the determination of what level to set. So all of those are important. Certainly, that is a difficult ask in the, in the current political environment, but it is, it is important to put it out there given the history of where we are on, on how we got into this situation.
Bob, I think, you know, and I like the words, you know, the great recession capitalized, but that not being identified kind of points. I mean, I think of a great recession is a whole lot different time than the, than the foreclosure crisis of two thousand seven, two thousand nine. I think we really need to identify that, the period where that happened and just like you said, the two thousand, two thousand seven, two thousand nine, you know, Florida foreclosure crisis, or you could say, or that session.
Real estate crisis.
So what's that?
Real estate crisis.
Yeah, the real estate crisis so that they, you know, and actually identify when that occurred. So, you know, something, remember, you know, we have two-year, you know, repetitive legislator. Some of them weren't here when, when that happened. So if you actually say, when we, when we lost that money, then, then my people might know. Yes?
One thought that just kind of occurs to me during that time, it wasn't just a real estate crisis, but we lost jobs. We lost people moving from the area.
But it was all the bubble.
It was all.
It was all part, part of that bubble. But some people may need to explore, we need to provide backup in a white paper, something that lets them know this is what we, this is how it affected us in Lake County.
But the people we're talking to with this mainly is our, our legislative delegation.
For our delegation. Granted.
And in fact, when we go out and take these priorities to the different civic groups, that's our opportunity to say, this is how it affected us. And now we are educating the legislators and making them aware of what happened as a gentle reminder. You know, so this is the tool that we use for our legislators. And, and then the, we use it as a tool here at home to elaborate and to try to get support for people forwarding our initiatives on and, you know, jumping on our bandwagon with us so that we can actually get support.
Thank you.
Okay. So the only, the only change that was in the recommended, or the discussion draft was, was about, about the funding having evaporated. We will address the reference to the great recession. And the, the asks, the actual positions in that item are the same. It's really just the description around it that has changed slightly. So we made a major change in, in basically our request as it related to operational funding. Given the huge emphasis on the professional educator issue in that crisis and because that's clearly an operational funding request, and that's what we're putting out there as being the top priority. We saw some overlap and also with the whole concept of adding a whole new paragraph of positions. We were looking at, at, you know, trying to eliminate about an equal amount so that we basically had still top priorities for you and not just every request that we've ever believed in. Many of these statements we still probably believe in, but we've, we recommend those deletions if there's any comments about that. And then the item as it is for respecting the local constitutional authority of school boards. The, the recommended draft remains the same. Board member LaRiviere made me aware of an item that she was interested in. And this is probably the, the most likely place. and this is probably the most likely place to add that item.
Well, my question is, don't we have the similar, if not identical, in the consortium or the FSBA? And I mean, are we, you know, because again, you know, we can beat them up with the same stick three different times, but do we really, because to me, you know, right now, we've got four items on this agenda. So, that means we've got twenty percent of push on each item. If we don't, if it's already being pounded by one or two different, you know, groups that we're a part of, we can yell, you know, we can make our point in that forum and allow us to really hit the ones, you know, to actually put a little bit more emphasis on the ones that really hit home here. Because this seems like to me to be, this is a state issue. This is, every board wants local control. Every board wants to carry this torch. You know, I don't think we need a separate torch for Lee County, you know. And I agree that even that number one may be, you know, a statewide thing, our own torch, but we've got a different slant on how we're approaching it. I think that we, I believe this one's different because both one and two, especially the millage, we're only one of very few that need that, is the point. And the number one is, I mean, that's our, that's right now is our Achilles' heel. And so, I think those two, you know, if I could get rid of the other three, I would. And I'm gonna, as we go through them, I'm gonna really, you know, squeeze really hard. But this one here is particularly, I think, is a, we could let go of, and we wouldn't still lose that ability to speak our piece. We would just have to do it in a different platform. Ms. LaRiviere, then Ms. Fisher.
One of the things that I gave to Mr. Sarah as an example are actual statutes that take control away from the district that are very specific. One of them being with regarding textbook adoption. And it's quite long, but it's statute one zero zero six point three three. And within that, under one A B, the last sentence, the whole part has to do with getting sample copies to the schools and to the public to view. It says, provide electronic. I get that. But I also understand teachers, especially at elementary level, when we would receive the kits that showed all of the resources, we were able to sit down and fully examine everything that that publisher was able to provide. By saying it's only electronic, it limits those conversations that teachers can have in making that decision process. It also limits the availability of those materials for our public to be able to view. We used to have a good viewing time in the mid-winter. Three different areas and three different zones where public teachers, everyone was invited to come, look through all of the materials, talk with people, sit through sessions that explained the different aspects of what was there. This totally takes that away. So, the only people that are gonna be there making decisions are the ones that sit in that committee, and they will be the first ones who get to see hard copies, not the whole program. And it takes away making a wise decision choice. This piece only benefits specific publishers.
So, what you're reading from, or what you're citing, is a statute that was put in place by our legislature. So, what you're asking for is, you want to be specific in saying eliminate statutes that prohibit local control.
Or, and, exactly.
And then be ready to cite this, this.
And others. Because, for example, this one specifically says, a school district may not request samples in addition to the electronic sample copies.
But couldn't we just, again, if it was in the platform of the consortium, that when you go up there to speak on that particular part, have that argument with you and bring that specific example in front of a legislature and say, this is what we need? Or do you want to have it, I mean, do you think it needs to be articulated?
I believe we need, I'm just giving you my opinion, and I'll shut up.
No, I know, it's what the, Ms. Fisher.
Well, we're starting here with our local priorities. And then we take them to consortium, and by virtue of reviewing them and hashing them out, we come up with a platform for the consortium. And the same thing at Florida school boards. So, it's another forum, and Florida school boards is like, this is our local, and then the consortium is South Florida, and then Florida school boards is statewide. And there was a lot of discussion last year at the Florida School Boards Legislative Platform Meeting about that. I mean, and it was unanimous that all the districts represented felt that this was important enough to keep. Even if we were to move it down, I would say that this is still what we want because as these laws are passed that further inhibit us from making decisions at our local level based on the needs of our community and our students, we're, you know, then why are we even here? So, I think that the point needs to stay with our platform as well as taking it to those next levels.
Ms. O'Shea.
And I like the fact that you have specifics, that you've provided specific statutes. And I don't see why we couldn't incorporate that briefly, like refrain, refrain, and I'm trying to think, refrain, repeal, any statutes, and then, i.e., give examples of the statutes that we're talking about, and then be prepared to speak to them. And I understand brevity, and I understand, and I know that you and I both have come from a platform that used to be very extensive, a lot of pages. And I think to have one short platform with five priorities, I do not think that that is excessive. And I appreciate the fact that, you know, we're wanting to be able to go in there with just a few priorities so that we can, you know, have a quick discussion because, you know, some of the legislators, you know, have more visits than others, and we might only get just a couple of minutes, and we may not be able to cover the whole priority. I mean, the whole list of priorities. But I do know that the fact that the local control is something that's very important to this community, and as I go out in the community, that's all I hear is, y'all have got to stand up to get, to regain local control. And I will tell you that I have seen local control go like this. There were times when the board had more local control than it has now. And slowly, we have let them encroach upon us by passing statutes like this that got put on a rider or something, and we didn't see it, and we didn't go up there and lobby against it. That is what we have to do. We have to be more vigilant in looking for these things. And when we know that something like this is going to be passed, we have to be up there testifying before these committees. And we have to be saying, no, we will not, you know, we're going to bring up, you know, busloads of parents if you try to encroach upon any more of our authority. Because we have a community that supports us. And so, I think that the local control piece is very important to be in our platform.
Anybody else?
And I will also agree, I believe our community needs to see that in our platform. They need, I believe that that's important. We talk about brevity, the other part with brevity, when we were at FSBA and working on the platform for last year, it was only, it had only four points. Okay, so then the consortium has for brevity. Well, then, at some point, some part may not be included. And I believe for us and understanding our community, this one's critical.
Okay, so we keep local control, do we want to add the specifics?
I would say yes. I would say that we put something about, we've got repeal and repeal the recent mandate that's, you know, a specific, but repeal mandates and reject any future statutes that eliminate local control.
Ms. Fisher.
I would like Mr. Martin to weigh in on that as far as.
Well, certainly, there are many.
Grab a mic, Mr. Martin.
Certainly, there are many statutes that have been adopted over the last number of years to take away local control from the school board. This Florida school law book keeps getting bigger every year. If we just track the history of the last few years, you'll see that many statutes are directed that, have that specific effect as each year passes.
So, then what would be our message to the legislature? To more pinpoint that and to emphasize that we need to be able to have that local control in order to make wise decisions based on the needs of our own community.
Well, in a legal context, the additional point is, that's what the Constitution provides, that the local school board makes decisions for the operation of the district.
Let me say that.
No, I'm good.
Mr. Sarah, you got your direction?
I believe so, yeah. And as far as the rejecting any new unfunded mandate, that's already the last bullet. And I believe there's consensus around addressing the specific issue on the instructional materials. And certainly, I know there have been issues around instructional material adoption locally. And if having the ability to have printed materials increases the ability for our citizens and parents to have input into that process, I do think we've had a little bit more of that activity here than has been, you know, the experience everywhere in the state. And so, that we would be further empowering those parents in our elementary school educators to get the best materials possible.
Okay, great.
If there's a way to, also, just, and this isn't the only one. I would like for us, as we are working with this platform and we're preparing for when we meet with them, if we could have staff, ourselves and others, kind of look through at any statutes that literally take that away, you know. I don't believe they read everything. And I don't believe they read anything in depth and think of ramifications. And that book is very, you know, you don't go in and just sit down and read that book. And so, I think with that, I think it would be that we speak about amending, repealing specific statutes that take that away. Here are some examples.
Support fair competition.
Okay, I'll take it. The next item is about supporting fair competition. This is part of your established platform, looking at the administrative fees around charter schools and making sure that the traditional students are not subsidizing the charter operations and those costs, and also maintaining the equity on regulation between charter schools and public schools. And given the work that was done, particularly by our delegation, to help us to protect the, how the class size reduction was handled in the statute last year, at least for one year, I think it's important to specifically state that, remind folks that that was something that they helped us to work on. But then also for the leadership of the state to make sure that it doesn't come back around again because that is the biggest thing that had been different between how charters and traditional public schools were treated under the law. And so, you know, there's a tremendous amount of savings, and, you know, we've protected that for at least another year, but I thought it was important, since it became an issue for the last couple of years, that we specifically spell that out. And so, that's the recommendation there. And I'm not seeing any comments, and so I think we're in the right ballpark there. And so, for the accountability, certainly, there, I know that you continue to hear from the community on questions of testing, issues around the state's accountability system and some of the changes that continue to be implemented with the new state tests and so forth. The items that were in your platform on this had already been adopted, with the exception of looking at the specific complaints about the problems that happened two administrations ago are old enough that we don't need to specifically spell that out. And so, the recommendation is that we leave the three other items. And again, those are items that you've adopted, and they reflect issues that I know you continue to hear from the public about. And I think that they're appropriate for your platform.
Ms. Riviere.
On bullet number two, delay transition to computer-based testing for younger students. I would like to be very specific, I would prefer something more specific to delay, something to the effect of delay transition to computer-based testing until fifth and sixth grade, you know, to give it a grade aspect rather than just by younger students.
Would you say that one more time? I missed it.
Sure, I would like to put a grade level.
Are you saying put a specific time?
I was saying by a grade, so general, by saying, it's like, okay, well, that's very ambiguous. I really, for our elementary students, it's better, to K through, K through five should stay paper pencil. And then middle school begin the transition, or one of the tests in fifth grade be computer-based, so that there is a truly a slow transition. But they do not need to be, there's so much of that testing that is now written. Math is no longer computation.
Well, the cost savings of the elementaries not having to have the infrastructure to do electronic testing would be enormous.
Yeah, it would be. So, what you're saying is delay to sixth grade, basically.
Ms. Morgan.
See, for me, that gets into being prescriptive again and takes control away from the superintendent in terms of how the superintendent, how the teachers would prefer, prefer to do the testing. I would, I would not say, so, two and three.
Two is eliminated, right?
No, I mean, three and four. One is delaying the transition, and the other is saying allow paper and pencil. Do we, I mean, can't we just say?
Oh, yeah, get rid of number three and just keep number four in place. And then once the districts decide when they want to use it.
Exactly, thank you.
Yeah.
Great.
I like it. Did you get that?
I like it too.
It's less brevity, and it's also keeps the control localized.
And there was one other point that we also may want to consider. At one time, writing was not assessed for all of the grade levels. I think it starts at fourth and goes through, starts at four, they do it in fourth, they do it in fifth. I would like to go back to where that writing is not given every year. That's a big thing that can make an impact on instructional time. So, that would go under, towards, with number one, they need to relook at the whole testing schedule itself. What is the, besides VAM, I think that's the only reason why they've now done reading every year, math every year, because it helps with that VAM score. It used to be staggered, which used to be able to have fourth grade, reading and writing assessment. Fifth grade, math and science. Then, and when they got into middle school, they would do math and reading until eighth grade, where they had then the writing and the science. But it's just too, it's too much. And it really makes a difference in quality instruction.
Ms. O'Shea.
Well, I don't know if, I don't know if we're talking to the legislature on that. Are we talking to DOE?
And that's what I need to, I guess we need to look at and see what the statutes or requirements are. And then we need to go after DOE because it goes.
Because we would ask them to help us with.
Exactly.
DOE, such as prohibit DOE from.
It goes back to follow the money. And what's really good for our students and what we need to make sound educational decisions as a district. We have. as a district. We have enough wisdom to come up with our own assessments to watch, monitor student growth.
My, you know, snap judgment without having the ability to do all the research on where this is right now. My snap feeling is that we look at the first bullet to cover that and that we're asking the legislature to look at the testing and to reassess all of it with an eye towards reducing the total time. But I will do some research quickly here in the next week, because we're going to get back to you a recommended draft for your adoption meeting. And changes to that can be made through motion, but the goal is to have a platform that can sail through in a couple of weeks. And that also will drive our submissions to the other, to the other platforms. My feeling is that that's probably much more of a DOE issue than a legislative one. And a lot of it was tied to the attempt by the legislature and the state to get out of the, the state, I'm sorry, the national test and to adopt a very rapid state-developed system. And at this point, as I understand the language arts, it's not a separate writing exam. It's really integrated and that's where a lot of this problem would come. But I will look at that, but what I'm leaning towards, based upon what I know and the lack of being able to give you 100% of the information on that right now, is that I think we could treat that first item where we're asking the legislature to look at that in a comprehensive fashion and to look at ways that it can be reduced, that that would be covered in the platform. And then we would have more ability to research this and not just a week or a couple of days.
Oh, exactly.
And that's the last of the items that are for you. If there are any other suggestions or comments, now is the time. And otherwise, I appreciate the input and the feedback. And I'm sorry we needed to do this right before school opened, but there's so many other deadlines for these other, that we couldn't wait two weeks to start the process. And I do apologize for that, because I certainly recognize that the focus really needs to be about opening schools tomorrow, and I'm excited about it. I hope you are.
Everybody is.
Yes, we are.
Okay. Any questions? Thank you, Robert. Appreciate it.
Thanks so much.
Appreciate it. You'll be working back with Ms. Fisher.
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, moving on now to Mr. Mora and Dr. Carlin, their board priorities.
Mr. Toyber, if you would like, we can get table skirts for the tables. We do have them available. They, I've been told they weren't originally put on there, because they might cause a little static with the microphones, but we can certainly do that if you want to take a break, real quick break, and they can put them on.
Please.
I have a skirt.
No need, just for future.
We're fine. We just need to sit properly.
All right.
Thank you, Dr. Atkins.
All right, well with that.
In the future, we'll have.
Okay, yes, sir. We certainly will.
Did we want to wait for Ms. LaRiviere to return, or do you want to go ahead and get started?
I think we can get started.
Yeah, she'll be right back.
Yeah, she'll be right back.
All righty. Good afternoon, board members. Dr. Atkins, Mr. Martin. Our purpose today in this workshop is to establish school board priorities for 2016-17 school year. I believe you have some documentation that was provided to you, and I'd like to go through that real quickly with you. You do have a document that goes through the protocols we'll use in the multi-voting system that Dr. Carlin will share in a second. On that same piece of paper, you also have some sample priorities from school boards across the nation. We're not suggesting that those are the priorities for this board, but just to give you an idea of the type of priorities that have been sent across the nation. In this packet, you will also find some immediate priorities that were developed for the district by the superintendent. In a second, I'll turn it back over to him, so he can provide a little bit more input in regards to those. I'm sure you've heard them continuously from the superintendent and also staff. The last document you have in your folder actually comes from the 2015-16 school board self-evaluation. And what we have here is any item from that evaluation that scored an average score of 2.4 or less. That same document, you'll see some items that are highlighted in blue and italicized. Those are items that received an average score of less than 2.0, or less than two points. So we offer these only for guidance as you work through setting your priorities for this coming school year. At this time, I'm going to turn it to Dr. Atkins, so if he has any input he'd like to share before we begin our activity, we'll turn the mic over to him.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Mora. Be very brief, just the document that you do have in there that's for me is a rather, I would say dated document. It's something that we adopted early on as we were coming into the, coming into these new positions and trying to really demonstrate what the top priorities were at the time. It's not like a lot has changed. However, we have been laser-focused on focus area four. And I'm very happy to report that Dr. Pruitt and her team and our school principals have really narrowed the gap from last year. At last report, it was around 22 vacancies that were in the district. But most importantly, you have less vacancy, you have like zero at like a school like James Stevens International Academy, whereas you had 12 vacancies opening last year. Manatee Elementary, you've reduced, I think we're down to zero. And some of our other priority schools are, you know, just a handful at the most. Our number one, really going into this year, is going to be about focus area one, which is really focused on our students, inspires students to think and learn. I'm in the process of developing a Vision 2020 document, which is a supplement to our strategic plan, which really, the purpose of the document is to say, in 2020, we want to be the number one school district in the state of Florida, so what are the milestones to get us there in the next four or five years? So that document will break that apart in terms of academic goals, like, for example, mathematics. Where do we have to be next year, the following year, the year after that, to get us to number one in the state? Same with ELA, science, social studies, the graduation rate, closing the achievement gap, et cetera. So you have goals in all of those areas. It also focuses, Vision 2020 focuses on our capital plan. And in terms of where do we want to be in 2020 as it relates to capital, that'll be a part of our priority as well. It includes, as a part of that document, our focus on the workforce, to make sure that by 2020, we're aligned with the needs of the workforce. So if you look at our career academies, if you look at our comprehensive high schools and other certification programs across the district, that we're lining up with the needs of this particular community. So while the document that you do have is important, it is somewhat dated. I'm in the process of developing this document, which will come to you in the very near future to weigh in on. But I think most of it you're familiar with. It just will have it in a little bit better format. And it'll be in such a format that shows what are the steps that this district needs to go, undergo or undertake to get to truly, yes, truly top of the state by 2020, which is, again. And just so we know, I think I've told you I stole this from Robert Gates, which is his plan when he was president going into Texas A&amp;M University. It was called Vision 2020. We shamelessly stole that, a book that General Dozier provided me. And I read it, and that was one of the ideas that came out of it. But it's helped, I think, helped us adopt our platform in terms of how we're going to undertake the, achieving the goals of our strategic plan in a meaningful manner.
Thank you, Dr. Atkins. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Carlin, so she can review the protocols we'll use during this workshop.
Thank you, Mr. Mora. Good afternoon, board members. Dr. Atkins and Mr. Martin. We're here today, as we talked about earlier, to establish our school board priorities for 2016 and 17. And this is our second conversation relative to the priorities. We had an initial conversation with you about a month or so ago. And so we really wanted to get down to the meat of the priorities today, and that's what our protocol is designed to do. We are going to utilize a quality tool called multi-voting. There's a variety of names given to it, but this is one that gives us an opportunity to have some dialogue and then to surface the priorities that the board collectively feels need to be moving forward. And so what we've provided for you, as Mr. Mora stated, were a few documents, as well as some sample board priorities. Again, there is no, no need to look at those and go, those have to be the ones we use. We're not advocating that at all, just to give you an idea of what we're looking for. And again, remembering that just the priorities are those most important things you feel, as a board, need to be dealt with first. They are a primary concern and primary need. So with that in mind, we had sent you an email just asking for you to take a look at a couple of priorities that you might have in mind, a couple of things that you think should be dealt with as a board, first and foremost. And what we're going to do now is just give you an opportunity to have a conversation. Perhaps maybe Mr. Toyber, Ms. Dozier in one group, and then our Ms. Fisher and Ms. LaRiviere, Ms. Morgan in another group, to start to brainstorm together some of the priorities. And then we will talk about how we'll use our quality tool to surface the most important priorities. So we'll go ahead and provide you with some chart paper and markers. Again, you can have some conversation, and what we'll ask you to do is just record as a group your priorities. And again, just take your time to do that. We'll give you probably about six or seven minutes to pull that together, and then we'll take our next step moving forward. Are there any questions? Okay, we'll go ahead and distribute the chart paper. Get some markers in front of you as well, and again, just have a conversation. Maybe select a recorder, and we'll give you a few minutes to do that work. Maybe select a recorder and we'll give you a few minutes to do that work.
I understand that in some sense, but in one way, that would make for a good team that we have. That we have people of different strengths and interests. And so, when we adopted our protocols, it was my understanding that we did that so that we would have, because we only go there and look at how should we do this, but the communication level, the color level is just,
we don't have workshops.
We haven't maintained it. And workshops are really the only place where you can have these conversations. So then we need that, that needs to be more frequent, so that we review our protocols, our policy protocols, and check and and do it on their own. Um, because when we do it, when we do it, we get, we get a little bit, I say also many.
So you're really saying when we have a workshop or when we have a briefing, you basically include an agenda item that says, take the pulse of the board?
Yes.
Exactly. What's the pulse of the board?
Right.
What do we need to talk about as a team?
Right. Right. And then we're going to,
Yeah, because I'm trying to get what you're saying together. Increase time to discuss. What's the word?
Well, um, I, I think that we want to do,
We want to increase opportunities for relationship building. And that includes taking the pulse, reviewing the protocols.
Right.
I've always wondered why, this is frustration to me, why don't we have a place in our, in our agenda where it just is time for discussion?
Well, that's,
Yeah.
So, so I understand, and I think that, I don't want anybody to misconstrue that, but the relationship has to be a working relationship that, that follows our, I think such a follow our policies and protocols, you know?
So then it's for developing a working relationship.
Um, right, a working relationship.
It would have been helpful if we got this up a gear up, but that's okay.
Mm-hmm.
Working relationship.
Okay.
Okay.
I was gonna say, you all get a chance just to go through them too, to just review them, so don't worry about that.
Okay. Okay.
Uh, review the protocols, but I was actually, I'll review it, um,
Well.
Oh, check the pulse.
Yeah, agenda item, check the pulse.
Is there anything else that you wanted to kind of incorporate, please?
I mean, I think that's enough, you know, I mean, it really boils down to governance, if you want to put that there.
In fact.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and then the, the next thing that I had was,
Well, I wanna, I wanna get something from Kathleen.
Yeah.
All right, well, just talking about student achievement, I would love to see us have periodic workshops to review the district strategic plan and thinking about the Plan Do Study Act model, which is like in the fall, the superintendent tells us his plan. We review it mid-year. He analyzes the outcomes. This is the new plan. I mean, just some sort of,
Like our progress monitoring.
Exactly.
So periodically review students.
Achievement, yes, through progress monitoring, district and school.
A strategic system.
Yeah, progress monitoring, strategic plan.
So you guys know who may help you, what we're planning to do this year. We're gonna do quarterly reviews with our, you know, progress monitoring for our schools, and so we can report to you all when we get to.
And that would be very helpful.
See, I would like that to be in workshops, so we can ask questions and have staff sitting around the table and really
Yes.
flesh some of this stuff out until it's, it's natural familiar, sort of.
Yeah.
And you said strategic plan. Programs?
Well, yeah, I said PDSA, you know, your strategic plan is basic, you look at what you've done, you review it, you analyze it, you make a plan, you do whatever.
PDSA.
We've got governance, we've got student achievement, and then the other thing is the, um, uh, community awareness and, and, and advertising our,
telling the story. I also wanted to add to that, community, I would love to have a community evaluate us.
Thinking that you just,
This is, this is inside, but the last time that I spoke to a group, I stung it out and I put out, do we get a school district name?
Were you ready, Dr. Carl?
And I said, okay, what's the first thing that comes to your mind when you see school district of Lee County? And people said things like, um, dysfunctional.
Mm-hmm. That's not, that's not even that, but I think we're there.
So after, then I went on with my presentation, and after that they said, we really don't know. So somehow we have to really enhance our ability to communicate the story of the district.
One of the things that I ran into when we were interviewing is that, even like the news press doesn't understand the difference between policy and practice.
Okay.
They kept saying, what is the board gonna do to improve high retaining teachers? And I had to say, that's not the board's job, that is the superintendent's job. And a part of having a self, a community evaluation of the board is educates the board about what the job, that educates the public about what the job really is. Because if you're asking questions about your job and all of those questions they wanna ask aren't listed, then they're going to the wrong place. They have a basic misunderstanding about the role of superintendent.
So promoting community awareness of the school system.
Yep.
So I guess we'll,
And your role as a board.
Right.
The one of the pieces that we talked about was to educate the community about the successes and needs of the district.
Right.
Do you want it to be something like that, or give me the words?
Well, I think if we could just say, uh, improve, uh, communication, or, I don't know, communicate, educate, improve communication with the community.
So we need to say what that is.
Right.
I think we're,
Let's, let's do promote community awareness. Promote community awareness.
Well, I'm,
More kids in the school system, right, and improve communication, improve communication, improve communication.
Communication to better educate.
Yes. The community.
Kathleen, what is the objective?
Yes, mhm, that's fine, that's fine. I was, I was thinking on a different track a moment, so that's good.
About our, about the district success, uh, district what?
Well, here's the thing, to me, there are two things we need to tell the public, that we're financially responsible and that we are academically successful. So we have to figure out how to communicate those two pieces. That's essentially our, that's our responsibility.
Our fiscal responsibility.
Right. And the, and the quality of our educational product.
Right.
So, which all we have to do is put some kids out there.
Mm-hmm.
Our fiscal responsibility and,
Quality of the,
Qual, uh, you know, I would say quality of educational product, but you know, you know, yeah, yeah, okay.
I wasn't, I liked what you said, I just wasn't sure what I did.
I can't remember.
You did fine. Now, there was a conversation about transparency. I believe we are very, I believe we are, I believe that we are not transparent. I believe that we need to do a better job making people aware of where to go.
Oh, that's what we're saying here.
Yeah. Yeah, I think our transparency, I can't see, anything else but, ladies?
Is that enough?
And then we've got whatever the, we can all look at what they have.
Well, we, check the pulse would be the self-evaluation too. We didn't put that in.
Oh, yes. Okay. Okay.
It's not, not very neat because we, but this is a working class.
Oh, I had one other thought.
Okay.
Because it was, whenever there is a new topic that requires the directive to the superintendent, a new policy or a new practice, that it must be workshop first. That would take, that's what we should have done with the playground thing, that's what we should have done.
Yeah.
Twenty minutes in, are we?
Anytime it's, it's, it requires a new directive, new policies, so workshop.
Dr. Carl, you wanna post that, let them finish up, because we're twenty minutes already passed.
Any issue.
New directives.
Yep.
Workshop.
If they're just finishing their last one.
Um, new policies, um, new directives.
Or po, new directives or policies should require a workshop.
Mm-hmm.
Prior to,
Yeah.
Not a briefing.
Right, a workshop.
Yeah, to be workshop.
Because then you're able to make responsible decisions.
And you're also in a position to ask staff to weigh in, instead of sitting up at the table and having that input.
Mm-hmm. And you know, one of the things I would like to ask, I don't know why Dr. Graham made the decision, but we used to have staff at the dais so that we could ask, I mean, I was a little bored at that time. Staff could be asked questions during the action meetings.
Oh, oh.
And they sat there and they gave, you know, right, they helped with the rationale piece, because the, well, yeah, so we've been lost, we've lost that. Because they were,
No.
Workshop, prior.
Um, yeah.
Oh, okay.
It shouldn't be discussed.
Okay, sounds good. So it kinda goes up here with this.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Right?
Yep.
If you do that, then you're doing this.
We've gotta have more meetings where we get, I don't like this, this is so pretty. I missed those, I missed, I missed my pleasure.
I do too. Just real quickly.
Could we take forever to do it, or?
Well, they have, uh, they do it.
Uh-huh.
Oh, I see, there's something, it was like,
I think I'll have a tour. G, excellent, G.
All right, so now that we have our priorities brainstormed, uh, what we're gonna, uh, ask you to do, uh, Mr. Moore has provided you with four, um, dots, and before we, uh, put those up on the priorities that you believe are the most important priorities, we're just gonna ask very quickly if one person from each group would just quickly review what the priorities are, um, that you brainstormed as a group and, um, I'll turn it over to Mrs. Dozier. I think she was volunteered, okay.
Um, well, first of all, I wanna tell you how I came about the five priorities. And the way that I came about these as, as board priorities is I looked at our strategic plan, and I looked at boards, high-performing school districts across the nation, and looked at their priorities. And using those items and the superintendent's priorities, I tried to encompass what we can do to put supports in place for the district. You can't learn, you can't have a achieving school district if you don't have a safe environment where people wanna be. So first and foremost, that's what you have to provide. Um, we need to have a high-performing school district, and we need to, we realize that we have student achievement that needs to be increased for all of our students. Um, in our budget, we need to have a financial plan that accurately reflects the needs of our school district. And of course, recruiting, retaining, and support effective administrators, teachers, and staff. And then creating an environment of mutual respect, cooperation, which this is our quality initiative. Um, and open communication through, we've talked about partnering with the community, with parents, businesses, and the community at large. I think, um, keeping it simple, um, with five goals, five priorities as a board, and that's how these were established.
Okay, thank you. And Ms. Fisher, Ms. LaRiviere, and Ms. Morgan, would you like to share your priorities?
Sure.
Okay, um, the first one is communicate, collaborate, and be respectful of colleagues and the superintendent, which goes along with the governance piece. And I think we were looking at this as more as what our goals were for us, is what our responsibilities as a board would be. So that was where our focus, that's where we were looking. Um, to increase time for developing a working relationship, uh, for, for working relationship building. Uh, for, um, to have time when we review protocols to make sure, rather than, you know, there needs to be time to sit, sit out and look at and say, this is one that we're having a problem with. Um, also a piece that I, and it came up when I was, when I was running, I said, why don't we have time at a board meeting where there's just time for some board discussion, not necess, where there's conversation. And so one of the ideas that, um, Ms. Morgan brought up was have an agenda item that's check the pulse, where we can have time to, um, discuss and, and bring up issues, and also, again, going back to our self-evaluation time. Um, the other part that we felt like we needed to do as a board would be to make sure that we period, have workshop area where we periodically review student achievement, uh, progress monitoring, and along with the, and coordinate that with the street strategic plan with, and incorporate the PDSA.
I, I think that, um, what we're trying to establish here are the priorities of the board as far as the overreaching goal, so that we can actually take those goals to be able to develop policies and directives for the superintendent upon where did the direction, where, where next year do we wanna take the district? And the, and where we wanna reach, and you know, where, if you take a look at Ms. Dozier's or other boards all across the state, are more about, you know, what are the priorities of the board that we want, that we believe are a priority of the board, because we're, we are the policymaking entity, not things we wanna do, you know, as far as these are kinda like action items, but more of, of, what are our priorities next year that, that we want the district that Dr. Atkins can, can use to, uh, develop and, and incorporate into the strategic plan as far as the direction of the things that we wanna see as a board. I think that's where I kinda maybe, I think we're on different pages here. Ms. Morgan?
Yeah, we are on a different page, because I see that as the strategic plan. So I look at board priorities as how the board supports in its role, the district strategic plan, the superintendent. So that was how we were looking at it, I think, so it's very different.
Well, if you look at the priorities of high-performing school districts throughout the United States, and throughout the state of Florida, when you look at the board priorities, the board priorities forward the mission of the district, and forward what the expectations for the entire district, for the community are. I think, and, and I do believe that we've maybe two different ideas going on here, which I think that what y'all have come up with, there's some, you know, there's some good meat in there, but I think that those are more personal for us as a board, and it's not, I think our overreaching authority is to establish priorities for the district, and then our budget, our strategic plan, everything should be in line with those priorities, keeping in mind what the priorities of the, of the superintendent are. In fact, when you look at what he has actually established for us, um, I think that, for instance, number one, ensure that every school has a highly effective principal. When you look at number one here, provide students and staff with a safe and caring school environment. I think that this goes hand in glove with that, because if you don't have good leadership in a school, then you're not going to be able, able to, and I, and I,
It also ties in with four on yours as well.
Right.
So I guess what needs to happen is that we, oh, I'll tell you what, can we go through our list?
Oh, I thought you already had.
And then, no, we have, we're not, we haven't, it's not finished. Um, Mr. Toyber stopped us on,
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were done.
And I'm just, and I'm just asking if we can go through our piece.
Sure, I thought you, I'm sorry, I thought you were done.
And then if we could go through kind of a, develop some type of a consensus so we can agree that this is where we want to have.
Go through your priorities.
Yep, and that's the, the priority work will, will occur after your review, and we'll clarify a few things as well.
Okay. Thank you, that is the word. Will you please write that in? Uh, the next one is to, for, uh, for us to communicate, improve our communication so that we better educate the community regarding our fiscal responsibility and quality of our educational product. Uh, most of our community, if you were to ask them a question regarding the school district, and when they think about the school district of Lee County, what do they think of? We were saying, well, people will say, oh, dysfunctional, or they will say, too much testing, but they don't really know our successes and our true needs. The other, the other part, and this may go to a piece of, you know, where maybe needs to go into a protocol and not necessarily for goals, would be whenever there's a new directive or policy, it should require that we have a workshop prior to the action meeting. For example, we were thinking of, like, the playground for recess time, having some time where we could do some workshop pieces. We're, we're just thinking about some different initiatives and so on, that were high- that were high table, um, high, um, what's the word, red button items. And, um, and, uh, or the vote regarding, um, testing. Had there been some time for allowing some good workshopping? I remember when that vote was taken, both you and Ms. Morg, Ms. Dozier and Ms. Morgan were not at the meeting, they were calling in. And it real, and I was thinking that night, there needed to be time for the board to have a, have some workshop time before they made a vote on something that would be as critical as that. So we were just, that was something that we thought of, things that were hot button items, if we had time to, if there could be some time to, um, workshop or whatever. So that was, that was a conversation piece. So that's kind of where we were going and then I guess what we need to decide, we need to come to consensus on, Mr. Toiber is. What's going to be the mindset is how we look at them.
Ms. Fisher?
Yeah, okay. When I look at, um, these goals, Lee County School Board will, I agree that provide students and staff with a safe and caring school environment. That's something that, that I think can be a board goal. I, the develop a financial plan that act, accurately reflects system-wide needs, yes. Create an environment of mutual respect, cooperation, and open communication through partnerships with parents, businesses, and the community at large. And, and I would add to that, and one another, because in order for us to make, um, the important decisions that we make, we, we have to have a team approach, we have to be informed ahead of time before we have to make a vote. So when I looked at the sample priorities that Dr. Carlin gave us, I kind of put a mark next to each one of them. And I came up with four different categories. One was governance, two was student achievement, one, a third, three was transparent communication, and four was supporting fiscal responsibility. So I kind of combined those where they were redundant and came up with those four big topics. I, you know, I'm less wordy, but I think like increased student achievement, academic achievement for all students, I don't know that that's a board responsibility. I think that that happens once we, um, set policy and staff does their thing. And we have a beautiful set of protocols that we all, that Mrs. Dozier worked very hard on, that we agreed upon. And I think sometimes we need to take time to look back at our protocols and, I mean, because if that's truly what we're going to do, then we need to be consistent about that. And not to respond, and, and I'm probably the biggest offender here, but to respond to community input without, um, studying the issue first and, and looking at what the potential fallout could be. So for instance, with the testing decision. So I think that if we look at our goals, then this is what are we going to do to support the strategic plan, to support the superintendent and his staff in, you know, increasing academic achievement and recruiting and retaining, um, the high-quality staff. That was just my comment.
Well, uh, you know, one of the things that I heard, um, I've heard both of you mentioned protocols and everything that I heard in the ones that y'all have discussed and put up there, I think are communi, communicate, collaborate, I can't read that, I can't read that first one.
That's okay, it, it, it kind of ties in, what that has in there is communicate, collaborate, and be respectful of colleagues and the superintendent.
Alright, and that is already in our protocols.
Right, well, and that is also, when, that ties in beautifully with what you wrote with number five.
Right.
Same thing.
Yeah.
It's the same compis, it's the same component.
And that's beautifully articulated.
Well, I, I think the difference when you talk about number five, I look at priorities of the board. The board is, if you look at the pyramid, the board is at the top of the, of the pyramid in the sense that we set the direction for the district. The strategic plan is, is Dr. Atkins' plan on how to achieve what we say this is where we're going. And so, and we do that collaboratively with Dr. Atkins and his, you know, he's got a vision now where he, where, how he thinks he's going to get the over, you know, we set the, 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 the vision and the mission of the district, and then he says, look, this is my plan. And his transformational program that he's got in mind is, is in line with what we have set as the, the overall direction. And so now we set our priorities for the next year incrementally, like what he talked about with 2020. He's got a plan with his strategic plan, how he's going to get from here to there in 2020. The board needs to support that by saying, what do, do we see as, as policy-wise that will enable that 2020 to do that? Not, not functionally, what our priorities are functionally, but what our priorities are as a board to do philosophically so that we can develop our action plan and, and supplement his strategic plan through those, those priorities. And, and I think that when you're getting into how to do, you know, the, to, to, the only one that I say that would be more in, in where I see vision is I believe the one about improve and better educate the community. I think that is a priority, that is something that we have to, an action plan can support that. In other words, how to get the message out about who Lee County is. We talked about branding and we talked about, you know, letting people know more about, you know, to me, you know, if, if we have three or four priorities, to me, the, the ones that I see is, you know, our teaching issue is number one, you know, our number two issue is, is our, our capital and our funding issue, and our third one, which is tied into all to those two, is the public needs to know what we are, who we are, what we're doing, and so that they become advocates in our, and on our, on our wagon. You know, Dr. Atkins has got us pointed, this is the wagon, we need everybody else to be jumping on board. And I think that's part of our priorities. Um, not so much, you know, the other one seemed a lot more introspectively, looking in, internally at us. That's not, I think we want to look at how do we, what, what do we want to project as a board? So when the public reads our priorities, they see us in control, that we're moving the district forward, that we're not looking inside the car, we're looking down the road.
Exactly, and, and I think that we are five, you know, individuals, soon to be seven, who, who's, are charged with acting as one body, the board. And, and to support, again, you know, the superintendent and his staff, his, his initiatives and the str, the strategic plan, driven by the strategic plan. So I agree with that. So communicating and creating an environment of mutual respect, I, I mean, I think we're kind of at consensus on that to start with. So then maybe we need to refine what we've got and pull it together a little bit more.
So Mr. Toiber, if I may, I may be able to assist here a little bit. Um, so what we were proposing to do next was to, I'm losing my microphone. What we were proposing to do next was actually to review the list, you will have your dots, and be able to identify areas where you feel strongly that these are areas that we need to work on. And we can wordsmith a, a little bit of this because I will agree, there are some areas that overlap. There's several that deal with communication, how we want to communicate, not only with the community, but also each other. So there may be some groupings there, but I want you to really think, as Mr. Toiber was encouraging, was high-level, like policy types of things or things you're going to do to work, you know, well and efficiently together, I think would be definitely where you want to stay at that higher-level priority level. So if, if there are other discussions, we can certainly entertain those. I want to be respectful of your time as well. Um, if you are ready to take your dots out and put your four dots where you believe the priority should exist, and then we'll see what surfaces. So let's take a moment and do that. And all you do is just lay your dots next to the item number that you feel is, should be the priority.
Oh, I guess I should have put my next to five.
That's okay.
Mm-hmm, I put him on the paper instead of next to the number. Count on me.
Okay, so just a quick wrap-up. It looks like, uh, the, the really clear winners, um, in terms of priorities were, number one, providing students and staff with a safe and caring, uh, school environment. Number five, uh, which was the outright winner, create that environment of mutual respect, cooperation, open communication through partnerships with parents, businesses, and the community at large. Uh, and also, looks like number eight, uh, communicate to better educate the community regarding our fiscal responsibility and quality of educational product. We also had two votes for re, periodic review of the student achievement, progress monitoring, and the strategic plan. Okay, the communicate was number nine. Okay.
And my question, Denise, is isn't number two the same as number eight? Number two says increase academic achievement for all students, and number eight says periodically review student achievement, progress monitoring, strategic plan.
Sure.
Which would make that a three.
Right, absolutely. So we could pull that one in, so in essence, we would have four priorities.
Sure, academic is achievement for all, you know, it can.
Yeah, so there would be, uh, one priority relative to safe and caring school environment, one related to, uh, increased academic achievement through, and you can, uh, refer to the periodic review of student achievement, progress monitoring, the strategic plan. And as we said, also, uh, creating that environment of mutual respect and communicating with our community. So those would be, uh, in terms of the highest priorities as the collective board, those would be the items that we would be looking at. Is there any further discussion or can I see a, we can support those as our priorities? I can live with them or I absolutely have concerns? We have four, so it'd be the safe and caring environment, the academic achievement one combined with the eight, um, and then also, uh, the environment of mutual respect, as well as better communication in our community regarding fiscal responsibility and the quality of our educational product. So that would be number eight. So we're looking at four priorities moving into the new school year. So what we wanted to find out is if we had consensus, like this was good to go, I can live with it, or absolutely I cannot. Okay, so love it, can live with it, or absolutely not.
Oh, love it is this, or live with it?
Absolutely, it looks like we have consensus, Mr. Toiber, thank you.
Good job, Dr. Carlin, Mr. Moore, appreciate it, thanks so much. Next, we're going to move to, uh, Ms. Reda Ralph and Dr. Itsid, to talk about our testing calendar.
Good afternoon, board members, Dr. Atkins, Mr. Martin. You should have, uh, two documents. One is, uh, PowerPoint, um, entitled Uniform Statewide Assessment Calendar and District Progress Monitoring. And the other is the actual, uh, state, uh, two thousand sixteen seventeen Uniform Statewide Assessment Calendar. Um, if it's okay, I'd just like to go through, uh, page by page, this PowerPoint and, uh, then take a look at the actual assessment calendar and explain what's on that and then, uh, move on to the progress monitoring. So, um, section one zero zero eight point two two of the Florida statutes requires that the commissioner, uh, publish a uniform calendar by August first of each year. And we did receive that on August first, exactly, um, this year. And, um, it also requires that districts use that uniform calendar to add their own information to mainly, uh, district testing windows or local assessments and then approve it at an, um, action meeting and publish it prior to October first. That would be published on our website and then, uh, reported back to the Department of Education. The specific elements that are outlined in statute that that calendar needs to have are listed on page three of the, of your, uh, PowerPoint. And, um, there are nine of them. I'm not going to read them to you, but they're basically around what are the assessments, what are the dates? The purpose of the assessments, who they're for, the basic information about any, uh, state testing program, uh, as well as, uh, the estimated testing time that, uh, each student would, uh, have during the year. And we'll get, get to the document, the actual document in a second. I'd just like to go through some of the other, uh, things that are, um, that have to do with this particular requirement. The assessment, uh, calendar does not include, um, what you might call voluntary programs. Um, the ones that come to mind are your IB program, which has a bunch of assessments associated with it, your Cambridge, uh, um.
Thank you.
Advanced placement, that type of thing is not included in the calendar. Uh, obviously, teacher-created tests, uh, classroom tests are not included. Pre-K is, is not included in this, um, calendar. And then we mentioned this good cause exemption, alternative assessments that's specifically for third grade, um, because statute allows for an alternative assessment to the FSA reading ELA. In the case where a student falls and level one is going to be considered to be retained, um, then there's a, there's an alternative assessment.
Which is?
Uh, we have been using SAT ten, Stanford ten. Um, we're going to change over to STAR and we're going to talk about that in our progress monitoring section. The state recently approved STAR as one of the, uh, alternative assessments, which is really going to save us some, uh, some money and some, some time because we can combine it with our progress monitoring. Okay, so I did mention that, um, we need to publish this by October first. It is to be part of the parent guide, uh, so that, in, in Lee County, that's part of our student code of conduct. Um, but it is a link in the parent guide, um, so we are going to. But it is a link in the parent guide, so we are going to update the link and, and so we should be good once this calendar is approved. We foresee bringing this back to you on the twenty-third of August, depending on our conversation today and if modifications need to be made. So going to the document, before we get to the progress monitoring, if you'll, if you'll take a look at the document, that's, that's this one here, that is, this is the template that the state has developed to address the statute, so we're required to use this template. You'll see that it's not all in one convenient chart. They've actually put it in six different charts. So I'd just like to briefly describe what those are for you. The first one is the glossary of terms. The second one outlines the type and purpose of assessment in, you know, for the ones that are specified by the state. And you'll see on there the, the names that you recognize, FSA and, and Flickers and those types of programs. And then the chart three, on page three, is where the statewide assessment calendar is given. And so I'd just, just like to mention a couple of things in relation to that calendar. It doesn't look much different than it has in the past, at least not in the last couple of years. The only thing that we were to do with that part of this template was to fill in district, the district window. And we didn't have any reason not to use the state window except in a couple of instances. And so on page four, there are four windows that would have bumped up against our spring break. So FSA, ELA reading, FSA mathematics, which is really the bulk of the testing, that's on, on page four, that's one, two, three, four, five, six, the seventh one down. On page four, if you go down to FSA, ELA reading and FSA mathematics. So those were scheduled to begin on April tenth and that's when our spring break begins. And so originally, the windows were a little bit smaller than this. So we had written a letter to request an extension of that window. Apparently, the DOE received quite a few of those requests because they decided to extend those windows across the state. So there is an, an extra week. So if we begin after spring break, we should be fine in terms of the overall window. And there's a couple of EOC windows that the state begins on April seventeenth and we're still in spring break on the seventeenth, which I believe is on a Monday. And so we, we would begin on the eighteenth or we could begin on the eighteenth. No one likes to start testing the day after spring break, but, but since there's a pretty wide window, we should be okay in terms of the timing. The other thing I wanted to mention is in relation to something that you all were just discussing previously, and that is the computer-based testing. So it is in statute that the, the state test should be on the computer and the timeline for transition is also in one zero zero eight point two two. And so for sixteen seventeen, this school year, the only assessment, state assessments that are left on paper are four through seventh, writing, and third grade, ELA reading. So we are, you know, a couple of years ago, they started introducing this into elementary school, three years ago, I wanna say. So we are now doing third grade math, fourth grade, reading and math, and fifth grade, reading and math, online.
That's what was fifth grade science too.
Fifth grade science is still on paper.
It's still on paper.
Still on paper and, and I don't know of plans to convert that over. That I don't see in legislation, but I do see the statement that the state testing program should be computer-based. So the, so the legislation would need to change as well as the DOE implementation.
That's what I was thinking, thought there was legislation. And the ELA writing is that, okay, I see that four through seven is paper-based and then eight on up is computer-based.
Yes, eight, nine, and ten are computer-based. So originally, they were going to go computer-based for writing as well and work that down even into elementary school. And I think there was this realization that, well, you have to have pretty good keyboarding skills in order to write out your composition on the computer. So they wait until eighth grade to do that. At least that's the, the current plan. Mr. Martin, have I said anything that?
No, as you mentioned, the statute addresses timeframe for different tests to be transferred to a computer-based requirement. And actually, upon the statute, the only one left that is required that has not been transitioned to a computer base is third grade ELA.
What's the statute for that?
It's one thousand eight point two two. Three D.
Three D.
A and friends, little D in France.
Thank you.
I also wanted to mention that you had talked about the writing being separate from the reading. It, it is combined in the scoring sense. In the actual administration, the writing test is a separate test. But when the, the state made the transition to FSA, they decided to make the writing a component of the ELA test. So now, when you get the score reports back, it's like a subtest of the ELA test. So it's, it, they would have to pull that out of there again in order to go back to some sort of separate writing, scoring or reporting.
It, it's so interesting because that ELA writing test is basically a reading test that they are writing to what they read. It is not a writing, a true writing piece that one would think of. It's changed drastically.
Yes, the FSA standards, when they're implemented, definitely focus on response to a test, a text for the writing. So it's, it's not, you're just given a topic or a prompt like in the past and you write an essay. They're responding sometimes to multiple texts.
Exactly. Several pages of reading are required to perform the task.
And, and that introduction also increased the time quite a bit. When we first started out Florida writes, if you remember, that was forty-five minutes. Then it went to sixty minutes and now we're at a hundred and twenty minutes for the writing part, partly because they have to do reading, quite a bit of reading. Okay, and then moving on to page five is another chart, number four, which is statewide assessment for select students. So this is where the state put the retake windows, which are obviously not everybody, and things like the assessment for English language learners, alternate assessment, that type of thing, that is not across-the-board testing. It's, it's for just a segment of the population. And number five is a district required assessment information. This was where the district had to fill in what we were going to do for this school year and publish that. So Mrs. Ralph is gonna chime in here in terms of our progress monitoring, but I, I just wanna start out by saying I think we looked at this in a, in a different way than we have in the past. Obviously, in the past, we were in the mode of very specifically dictating the, the standards that we were assessing, sometimes weekly assessments for elementary schools. And this time around, we're looking at it a little bit more globally. Dr. Atkins especially wanted a more national perspective and a less intrusive testing system. And we think that we found that with Renaissance Place, STAR sic, STAR reading and STAR math. We have been doing it in elementary school for quite some time, especially the reading part of it. And they like it for a number of reasons. One is its brevity. It is a computer adaptive testing system. I'm not sure how familiar you are with that, but it, it, it does two things. One is that it presents questions in a certain number of the standards for every student. So every student is getting a completely different test. So it does cover the standards. And, and then it also is adaptive in the sense that as you answer questions, if you get a question wrong, it kinda goes to an easier one. If you get a question right, it goes to a harder question. And in that way, it can more efficiently pinpoint where you are. And that's really what we wanna know with our progress monitoring, both from a district level and from a school level, is, is where the student is, not necessarily, you know, can they do this part of this standard, but, but generally where they are so that we can do some support and, and program remediation and things like that. The other thing I wanted to mention about it was that, and now I lost, lost the train of thought there. Oh, the, the, it is one of the few programs that we've reviewed that actually has done studies on the predictive nature of it, both with FSA. And they, they published a study in April. Or, one study was in April, one was in June, specifically with data from STAR reading and math and its relationship to FSA. So it'll, it'll give us predictive validity. And they did a study with the high school reading and math in relation to ACT college readiness scores. And so we've used those scores to set some cutoffs so that we can see where students are in relationship to those particular benchmarks.
Thank you.
When we're referencing progress monitoring, we wanna be ensured that we are monitoring our students and we are checking for understanding and we want to see growth of our students. If they're not making that growth, we wanna be able to provide the resources and the support for those students and those schools that might need that help. With STAR three sixty, we're able to do that. We're not gonna do, give grades with it. It is gonna be a national, nationally normed test in which we can look at how our students are performing against other students across the nation. We can also monitor our students in ELA and math. And it's a quick, quick assessment, as Dr. Itsin said. We wanna be able to do a baseline in August with STAR three sixty to see where the students are because in some cases, the math is totally a new, new thing for us. Also, using STAR at our seventh through twelfth grade will be new. So we wanna be able to get a baseline and then we wanna be able to have those quarterly data chats to see where our students are. We wanna be able to help and support our DA schools. We spent a lot of time over the past, it seems like several months, talking about focus area one with our strategic plan. And then, of course, we all wanna look at focus area six, which hasn't been mentioned much, but we wanna be able to, to drive our decisions with that data. And that's what this is doing. This is also in line with Dr. Atkins' academic priorities for our school district. We're looking at our, at our ELA and math. But in addition to, we also wanna look at science and social studies. We wanna look at science at fifth grade, eighth grade, and our biology EOC, just those specific areas. We also wanna look at social studies for US history and for civics for our EOCs because we wanna be assured that our students are on task. We won't be doing a baseline for science and social studies in August because we're still determining which assessment is gonna be the best that's gonna meet those needs because we want it aligned like the STAR is. And we have a couple in mind, but we're getting some finalizations. So we're looking at the October date.
And just a couple of things about the, the schedule itself. You see some highlighted dates. We did tweak those since this was posted for the first time for you last week. And one of the considerations was there is legislation that says that in courses that have statewide and of course exams, we cannot do another standardized assessment in order to reduce the amount of testing. So you won't see a May testing window for biology and US history and algebra one, those, those courses with EOCs.
We also, again, with the data chats, we're focused on our DA schools especially, but we also wanna make sure that we're, we're providing that assistance to all of our schools because all of our schools, depending on the population of students, at any time, they could slip backwards. And, but we wanna be sure that we have those supports in place and those resources to be there for them. Again, this is totally different than what we have done in the past. It's not a check, it's not a checkpoint, it's not tied to a, it's not tied to a certain book. It's not tied to what instruction is occurring in the classroom. It's looking at where the students are over some learning that has occurred. So that's what we're, we're trying to look at. We also want to point out that these tests are quick. I think I've already said that, but I wanna emphasize, they're not gonna take the full instructional class time. We had some checks and checkpoints last year that took one class period. Sometimes it went over to the second day and that's not what this is doing. We also had teachers to pilot this program this past spring. We had several schools that were using STAR three sixty, all of the, the progress monitoring tools we were considering. We put out there in the spring and we had schools piloting it, looking at it. And then we brought teachers in and principals in and talked to them about it. And they also went through the process of them making the decision of what they wanted.
There is about a fifty-page technical manual included in the backup information if you're interested in.
I'm sure.
About the validity and reliability of the, of the assessment.
Where is that generated from?
Sorry?
Is that an internal document? Is that from the?
No, it's from Renaissance Place. It cites the research that it was based on and, and all of the statistics and things like that.
That's your bedtime reading, not mine.
Sorry?
I was gonna ask, Mr. Toyber, if I could ask Dr. Itsin, just to repeat what you said about the EOCs, that they, if they take the state EOC, they will not?
Yes, the wording in the legislation around something like in, in courses where there are state administered and of course exams, no additional final assessment may be administered in a course with a statewide standardized EOC assessment.
So then the statewide EOC is it as far as determining where they are?
Yes, and, yes.
Can we make that backup paper, Dr. Atkins available on the, on the web for public? So they can see the validation. I think that's good for that to be available.
Sure, we can do that. Technical manual. And there's one final chart, Ms. Rivera.
Just a thought. I know that a lot of times with, when they provide the research and the whole backup data, did they do a summary of the research or do they have just the whole big book?
There are, there are some summaries of it. They cite, I mean, they have a chart where they show how many studies have been done and, you know, it's fifty, sixty studies. But I, I think there's some summarizing of that.
I was just thinking how long that is and it would, it would be nice if there's some way we could have quick access to just what the summary is.
Well, it's a white paper. I mean, it's just for people who wanna delve into it.
Well, and there, there are the, the two studies that they published recently on the ACT correlation and the FSA correlation are fairly short.
Okay, good.
So we can, we can post those as well.
Those would be really beneficial.
So the last chart on page eight is the estimated total testing time by grade level. And they published this by minutes. So you can see that the state filled in the statewide assessment times and minutes in that column and then we filled in what we estimate to be the, the district testing time and then the total. So this is in reference to statutory language that limits the testing, the combination of state tests. testing and district required to no more than five percent of the instructional time during the year. Um, so you have to do a little math to figure out where we are with that, but, um, the, the total on the most tested grades, which are s- grades seven, eight, and nine, if you look at the, uh, nine hundred and sixty minutes approximately, that's about sixteen hours, and the state is using nine hundred instructional hours as the denominator for that. So if my math is right, that comes out to one point eight percent, uh, for the total testing time. So it would be, for any one student, at least in these required tests, it would not exceed two percent. That, um, again, does not include some of the other testing programs that are specific to specific groups.
Right.
And I think, I think that's it, except if there are any, uh, follow-up things here. I think we mentioned that we are, um, going to bring this back on August twenty-third to the action meeting, um, if that works out. And, uh, then subsequent to that, we would, um, update the link in the parent guide and submit that to the Department of Education by October first.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Ralph? Now, Dr. Atkins, you wanna, you'd, Dr. Ralph, wanna go over our turnaround school plan?
No, will do. Um, we did, um, have the opportunity to, um, to go and, of course, present this particular plan to the state board, uh, and, uh, we received acceptance of this plan. I will have to say that, um, we, um, our team did do significant origin, uh, significant revisions to the original plan, and, uh, I believe that the final product, uh, is something that will, um, dramatically impact the trajectory of this particular school. I just wanna, I'll highlight a couple. Well, let me just briefly go through what my presentation was to the state board, and they limit you to five minutes, so.
Do you make call time?
I will be, I will be quick. Yeah, do you, call time. You, you know, for me, that was a, a quite a challenge. So, um, first of all, there are several different options that we can choose as a school district in terms of a turnaround plan. Uh, what we choose, chose for, uh, James Stephens was considered a hybrid option. The reason it's considered a hybrid option is because you had a closure of, uh, six, seven, and eight, which, uh, resulted in about approximately two hundred and eighteen students that were distributed, um, throughout the district. One of the things that won our plan approval was the fact that this school district, unlike other school districts, um, in fact, the one right in front of ours, did not distribute those students to schools that were going C or higher. Uh, we, our plan did that. So, uh, all of our students that were six through eight for this upcoming school year, uh, were able to, um, go to another school that was at a grade C or higher. And I have to commend district staff, because these folks literally called parents, uh, one, individually, and where they did not have parents respond individually to help them, uh, with their new school choice, they sent social workers out to make sure that contact was made. Uh, I also have to commend, um, you know, both, uh, Ken Savage and Tommy Bowen on this whole effort. They just really did a tremendous job in this transition and, um, you know, because they certainly helped, uh, certainly helped with this effort. Uh, one of the reasons that we chose the hybrid model is, uh, if you looked at particularly the middle school trend data, uh, trended, uh, down in both ELA and, uh, math, uh, in just about every grade level over a three-year period of time. We also looked at student selection data to make that, uh, determination, and we found that, uh, James Stephens International Academy not only continued to be an under-selected school, but the selectivity continued to decrease across that three-year period of time. Uh, you also saw a decline in enrollment during that period of time, and you also had significant teacher turnover at that school, anywhere from eighteen to se- seventy-three percent. Uh, and I said that correctly, eighteen to seventy-three percent teacher turnover at that school. And, uh, when you have that degree of turnover, it's very, very difficult to really make the progress that you need to make. Uh, that school opened last year with twelve vacancies, and, um, that had to be filled by substitute teachers. So, uh, again, it was a model that was not working, so we closed the, um, six, seven, and eight. We also, um, hired, um, did some staff turnover, which I'll, uh, or changeover, which I'll talk about in a minute, and we also have an external, um, external consultant, uh, which is Nissel, that is coming in also to help us, uh, with the school. Personnel, uh, the most significant change at James Stephens is, is that we have a significant change in staff. Uh, fifty percent of the instructional staff turned over. We also had a new T, uh, principal put, put in place there, um, Mr. Savage, who has a proven, uh, track record, both at, um, Veterans Park, where he is with, over the last three years, Veterans Park has been one of the top ten, uh, K through eight schools in the state of Florida. Prior to that, he was at Dunbar High, and he was, I believe, really instrumental in the, uh, the, uh, F to A turnaround at that school in twenty-ten, and then, uh, the maintenance of that the following year. The AP, um, that we brought in there, uh, has, um, a really good curriculum background, particularly in elementary, and she also has a very good coaching, academic coaching background. She's a highly effective teacher. Additionally, the one that, that remained at the school was also considered highly effective. Mr. Bowen, um, and, and others have said that she works really well with students in the community, so we asked her to stay on there. Uh, we've brought in six highly effective and/or high-impact teachers to that school. Uh, we also have four teacher leaders instead of the normal two, uh, that we typically place at those schools. So four teacher leaders and PDNL specialists. Those are all new to that particular school, and I think that will make a significant impact. Uh, we also have, um, Nissel, which is helping, um, the leadership team at that school, and Nissel has a research-based, uh, they have research that has shown, demonstrated that they are highly effective at, um, at coaching, leadership, at, and turning around struggling schools. So, uh, they have done this in two studies, which I can provide, but, uh, they are also going to be supporting Mr. Savage and his entire leadership team at that school for the upcoming school year. Um, I think that, and again, those studies, John Hopkins and Old Dominion are the two places where those studies took place. I believe that, um, gives us the majority of the highlights other than to say that we have a district, uh, focus. Dr. Santini has come on down to the district office, and, uh, I will say, has absolutely hit the ground running, um, out to schools. Uh, he was, uh, coming back from, uh, Mirror Lakes today, in fact, so he, um, but he has been, um, he has been out to James Stephens and has talked to, you know, that staff about its needs. He will be, um, out at that school, um, at the very minimum every other week. Um, so we will also be doing, uh, data dialogues with that school quarterly with myself. Um, that means that they will actually, um, we'll, we're gonna use technology and broadcast them in, and they'll be in front of our cabinet, and we'll go through their data and also talk about their needs. I'm calling it data dialogue 'cause they may be difficult conversations for some of these schools, um, 'cause we wanna make sure they're doing what they need to do, and they're also, that they get the support that they need. But, uh, between, um, Dr. Santini and, um, the district team, I believe that this school will be extremely well-supported. Um, and, um, you know, I promised the state board, uh, I, it could've been a D. I told them at least a C. So, uh, no pressure, uh, Mr. Savage, but I think he'll do at least the C. So, having said that, that is our plan for James Stephens International Academy. Uh, I will tell you as superintendent honestly, and, and, uh, you know, being a part of that school for a number of years, um, that this is the first time that I'm, I'm, that I am comfortable with what we're doing at that school. Not only com- comfortable, but proud of what we're doing at that school. I think that, uh, we finally have, are doing what we really need to do there, and, um, I think we're gonna get great results. Thank you.
Any questions, Board? Great. Can you give me, Dr. Atkins?
Thank you.
Now move to, um, board member discussions, see if there's any new items or areas involved. I'll start with you, Ms. Morgan.
I have none.
Ms. LaRiviere?
Um. No, not at, not at this time, I don't think.
Ms. Fisher?
I just wanna say thank you. This is a very informative workshop, and I appreciate it.
Ms. LaRiviere?
I was going to do the same. I was gonna thank the staff on the presentations that they prepared, thank the superintendent and you, Mr. Toibert, for going to, um, I don't think y'all went to Tallahassee, y'all went somewhere else.
St. Lucie, or St. Lucie.
St. Lucie, and, uh, for presenting this plan for the district, and I think that it's going to be a plan that's really gonna do a good job. So thank you for doing that, and thank you certainly to all the staff today that worked with all the presentations and all of the work that we did. Good job.
Thank you. And I'll just reiterate what the other board members have said. I think our staff has been really, uh, stepping it up and really doing the things that we need to do, uh, to provide this board with very meaningful information and dialogue, and to give us the, the opportunities that we need to, uh, to participate. I also want to thank Dr. Atkins' entire staff. Um, the, the news media has covered our preparation, uh, for our new, for our opening tomorrow, uh, very positively on every channel, as well as the news media. Uh, it is becoming very public that, uh, that this, this school district knows what it's doing, uh, both transportation-wise, teacher-wise. Uh, it looks like we are probably best poised for one of the best starts, not to put any pressure on you, Dr. Atkins, but one of the best starts, uh, in the history of Lee County, and, uh, and I wanna commend the entire, uh, uh, Lee County staff for, for doing so. Uh, te- I know the teachers are excited, having spent all their days there, so, uh, I wish them all luck tomorrow. I'm sure we'll all be out in our schools. Um, I'm gonna ask Dr. Atkins in his discussion to actually coordinate where he's going to be. I know we're planning on being on different schools, but I think it's important that, that if we can coordinate so that we are, we cross roads with Dr. Atkins at some point in the day, so that every board member can be at a school with Dr. Atkins. Um, that would probably be great if we can coordinate. I know it's, it's a big district and a lot of moving parts, but, uh, Dr. Atkins has his schedule that he'll share with everybody to, to make that happen. That's all I have. I'll move over to, uh, Mr. Martin. And I'll go to Dr. Atkins.
Okay, then, uh, just quickly to, to discuss my schedule, and I, we will, I think we have already sent this out to you.
Yes.
Okay, so, uh, starting out, uh, early in the morning, about four-thirty at Fort Myers High School, uh, serving breakfast. I think they're gonna be welcoming the freshmen, the seniors are gonna be welcoming the freshmen there to Fort Myers High, so that'll be, should be a fun activity. We'll make our way out to, um, uh, the, uh, South Compound, Bus Compound, um, so five fifteen, five-thirty-ish, um, wave, uh, to, our bus operators, wish them well, uh, and watch that. I did that last year. That's, that's, uh, very interesting if you have an opportunity to go do that. Um, and then we are going to go back to South High, and I say back 'cause we were out, many of us were, several of us were out there today, uh, but we're gonna go out to South High School and, uh, receive those students as well. Uh, then we are going to go, let's see if my memory serves, James Stephens International Academy. So we'll be there, um, apparently they, she's got me set up, Lauren has got me set up to be a crossing guard out there, so that will be interesting. Try not to get any students hurt. Um, so, uh, then we are going to the Success Academy, so we're gonna, uh, walk around there for a while, uh, and see, uh, what I've heard, I can't wait to see it, uh, the remarkable transformation that we've seen at that school, uh, and see. Then we are going out to Challenger, and Challenger, um, going to, uh, be passing out Chromebooks, and, uh, and then we will wrap it up, uh, with, uh, lunch at Colonial Elementary School. Um, and then, of course, we're, we're going to come back and spend some time with, uh, with Mark and Donna. We have a meeting that, uh, has been on the calendar, so full day, uh, but, uh, a good day, and I, I'm excited about, um, what I think will be a successful, I hope will be a successful opening.
Fantastic. All right, anybody for the good, Ms. LaRiviere?
Just a question. I know that several other district staff are going to be at other schools as well. If there's any way that we could, um, it might be helpful to us. I already have a schedule, but I have some, I have a block of time so that if there is a school that we see that has not, has been missed, that we make sure, if there's a school that didn't get somebody there, that...
Okay, I will ask, uh, Mr. Law and Mr. Dobson to get that to you. They've, uh, deployed staff across the district. Make sure we've had, we have staff, uh, in every zone, strategically deployed, so we can react quickly if there's a need somewhere. And then, um, we also have, I, I know, you know, all of our school development folks, uh, you know, Shanna and, uh, Mr. Deming, Dr. Santini are gonna be out in buildings as well, so we'll get you that information. I'll be happy to do that.
Just don't wanna leave anyone out.
So are you saying that we will have a presence in every school tomorrow?
We will. I don't know if every school, but we'll be, we'll be across the whole district, um, tomorrow.
That's what, that's what I was wanting, to make sure, so that I could see if there is a school that we haven't had a presence, then I could purpose to, to swing by there. And if not tomorrow, in following days.
Will do. What we, what we have tried to do, just a, a little bit of a change, is we, we really want to, uh, we do the thing that we always do, put out there to schools, do you need anybody to assist you and help? And then, um, folks down here in the central office, uh, do go out to those buildings, but we also don't wanna put staff out there where they're in the way. So some schools don't ask for help, and we don't, we don't put people out there that they haven't asked. But, uh, we do have a number of people that are out there. We'll get you that information.
Great. Before I adjourn, is there any good of the order, anybody to add? If not, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.